Thank you and good evening. Welcome to this evening's meeting, February 21st, meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. I'm Anita Mecklenburg, Chair. Next to me is Jim Lehan, our clerk.
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet. And Kevin Calcutta is joining us remotely today for this meeting. So just to document that, let's start the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so we are going to start this evening's meeting with a continuation of the public hearing on the water hearing. And so do you want Jim to do the motions? Why don't we have him do that? Is that okay with you, Kevin?
That would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Do you mind?
I don't mind a bit.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the Select Board will meet on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 124, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Additional public access to this meeting shall be done via Zoom online video conferencing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during allocated windows outlined in the board's public comment policy. To join the following web link or call the dial-in number listed below at the start time called order. Please be advised this meeting will be audio and video recorded for future rebroadcast by Norfolk Community Television. For more information on getting connected and using the video conference, please see and the webpage, I believe, is displayed. Is that correct?
Yep.
To read that would be kind of silly. So do you want me to? I don't think.
I think we have to move.
We do. Well, we have to move to open.
The hearing was continued.
It's continued. And are we closing the meeting this evening?
The intent would be to close it.
But we're not closing it yet then. So now it's open.
So now the meeting is open.
I apologize for my confusion on that. Sorry about that. Until the meeting is open, I'm going to turn it over.
Thank you, Chair Mecklenburg. The intent for tonight's meeting is to eventually have the board vote on the water rates. However, our DPW Director, Mr. Crane, is here just to talk about one question that was posed by residents was about the water quality. So we would like to have our director talk about that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for having me. Just a broad overview of the water system and the water quality of the system that we have. Obviously, we are mandated by DEP to ensure that our water meets a specific standard, a very specific standard. We do test for items like lead and copper and the new PFAS regulations that have come out. Our water is tested regularly, monthly if not more often than monthly. And every month, those results have to be turned into DEP. So they do watch it very well. And I would say, in my opinion, that our water is the best in the area.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Jim?
It's hard to ask a question about the best in the area.
I know, it's super hard.
No, you guys do a great job. You always have. So no, I have no questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. So is there any public comment as this is a public hearing? Anybody out there in the universe? I do not see anybody in the universe. So we can close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing for FY24. Well, actually, we have not voted on the water rates. Is that correct?
No.
So I will just move to close the public hearing on the water.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Then we need another motion?
I move the board approve the FY24 water fund rates.
Roll call vote. Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Really appreciate you being here.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Always good to see you, Blair.
Thank you.
And now at this time, we'll open it for public comment. This is when upper people in the community have an opportunity to spend three minutes telling us what they think about things that affect the lovely town of Norfolk. Is there anybody who would like to share a public comment at this time? So I'm moving on to number two. Vote to approve assent for the right-of-way easement over Mill River Bridge on Mill River.
Thank you. This item is coming before the board. This is sort of classified by Town Council as a housekeeping item. Land Court requires the town's assent for this plan that has been submitted. The petition, the plans, and everything of the backup necessary for the packet are included in the Select Board's packet. Town Council has reviewed this assent and approved of the scent. And you have information from Mr. McCarthy and our Town Council, Mr. Harrington, just saying that they approve this and have no issues with this ascent for the right-of-way easement at Mill River Bridge, Miller Street.
Excellent. And just one of the properties, Leland Wild. I'm in the interest of public knowledge. I'm a nearby neighbor of Leland Wild, not in a butter, but my home is nearby. Kevin, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Jim?
None.
So I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board authorize the town administrator to execute a letter of assent on behalf of the town and support a petition of approval of the plan filed in Land Court as case number 20 SBQ 0661601-001 by Leland Wild LLC for property it owns and the town described in certificate of title number 189426.
Second, roll call vote. Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Thank you. And we're on to number four. Oh, another housekeeping item. Go ahead, Justin.
Another housekeeper, and this is a vote to approve a request by the town clerk for a police officer detail. As the board is aware, because of the Votes Act, this is sort of a process that's going to occur for every election moving forward. Our town clerk, Ms. Green, coordinated with our Chief Hines, and they're asking for one detail officer to be assigned outside at the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
None. You entertain a motion?
I do.
Move that the board prove one detail officer assigned outside the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup at May 2nd, 2023 election.
Second, roll call vote. Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Excellent. And another housekeeping item, it looks like. Go ahead.
Yes. One other additional sort of requirement because of the Votes Act that was passed in 2022 is the Select Board must vote to allow early in-person voting. So Ms. Green put a schedule together that is a part of the original agenda. And she has come up with that date acknowledging the holiday there. But this was another vote for early in-person voting.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
None.
None? All right, a motion?
Move that the board allow early in-person voting for the annual town election scheduled on May 2nd, 2023, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Do you please be sure to thank Carol for all of her work with that?
I will.
Thank you. And another housekeeping item. A lot of housekeeping today.
So this item is to officially appoint Mr. Lehan as the Select Board Clerk. I guess it's in Norfolk tradition for this to occur. So I don't have much to add there. I don't know.
So just history for the thousands of people out there watching, when C.C. Van Tyn moved out of Norfolk and we were a two-member board, Kevin Calcutta took on both roles of Vice Chair and the role of the clerk. But now that we are fortunate to have Jim as part of our board, he will take on the usually the newest member takes the clerk position is the tradition of the Norfolk Board. And so the goal of this is, again, housekeeping to clean that up and officially appoint Jim as the clerk. And then Kevin will become the Vice Chair. Any, no comments? So I would entertain a motion. Can you?
I would ask Mr. Calcutta to make that motion.
And while I would hardly describe Mr. Lehan as a new member of the board, I would be happy to move that the board appoint Jim Lehan as Select Board Clerk.
Second, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
And I wish to thank you publicly for not saying an old member of the board. Much appreciated.
And number seven, Norfolk Baseball and Softball Parade.
So now we're getting into the agenda items for approval for the Norfolk Baseball and Softball Parade. This has been vetted by our DPW and Police Department team. There are no issues. However, we do want to let the public know that this will have an impact on traffic for individuals who are going to the transfer station. DPW will be putting up signage and utilizing social media to get the word about the disruption in traffic there. As well as the Police Department will require the association to pay for a detail officer for the parade. This is what has typically occurred. Otherwise, there are no issues and we have approval by DPW and our police.
Excellent. Kevin, any questions? Jim?
Longstanding tradition.
Love it, love it, love it. All right, a motion?
I move that the board approve the route for the Spring 2023 Norfolk Baseball and Softball Parade.
Second.
With enthusiasm.
With enthusiasm. Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan.
Do you hear the enthusiasm?
Enthusiastic.
Sorry, interrupted you. Go ahead.
Enthusiastic aye. Jim Lehan.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Thank you. Number seven, vote to approve the use of Town Hill for Easter Sunday.
So I have eight there, but yes.
Eight, you're right, eight.
This is an event that seemed to occur sort of annually. It's on Town Hill. It's an Easter service in the morning at 8:00 AM. And the church is asking for the Select Board's approval for this event.
Excellent. Any questions?
No, but just as a disclosure, I am a member of the church and the treasurer of the church. I will recuse myself from the vote.
Kevin, any questions? It's a lovely service. I've participated in it before. Will you read the motion, Kevin? Or would you like me to read it?
I move that the board approve the use of Town Hill for the Federated Church Easter Service on Sunday, April 9th, 2023, at 8:00 AM.
Second, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Jim Lehan, recuse.
Thank you. And now we're on to number nine, to vote to approve the Grange Annual Cleanup.
Yes. So this is the 14th Annual Clean and Green Townwide Cleanup. The Grange is asking for support for this cleanup process. They are requesting that the town provide them with a dumpster, which DPW is prepared to do so, and appreciate the efforts by residents to beautify our town. There is no concerns by our departments with this.
Excellent. I have participated in this many, many years with my children and really appreciate the immediate impact it has on our town and the opportunity for citizens to be involved in the beautiful town of Norfolk. Any questions or concerns or comments? Kevin? No? So I'll entertain a motion.
Move that the board approve the Norfolk Grange's 14th Annual Clean and Green Wide Cleanup on Saturday, April 15th, 2023, by authorizing the provision of a dumpster for trash removal.
Second, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Should be drinking some tea there, Kevin. And tea, liquids. Okay, moving on to the cola for our retirees.
Yes. So the Select Board has a memo from myself and the Executive Director of the Norfolk County Retire System. Recently, there was a provision passed allowing for an additional 2% retiree cost of a living adjustment. This was voted in November by the Retirement Board in approval of it. The County Commissioners voted in approval of the additional 2% in January. One of the requirements as part of this process is that each of the towns in Norfolk County consider this and that 2/3 of the towns must vote in approval of this additional cola appropriation. I received word from the Executive Director today that the towns of Avon, Cohasset, Holbrook, Randolph, and Westwood have considered this. They have all voted in approval of it. One caveat is that as part of evaluation, there's a valuation every two years on sort of our pension system. So there is no, there is no defined cost of this provision, although back of the envelope sort of mathematics based on the town's appropriation of the cost, which was $1.7 million. Norfolk is essentially on the hook for 3% of that. That'd be about $54,390 if all conditions stayed the same, which in a valuation that the markets change. You might have more retirees, the returns on investment may be different and so forth. So I give that information to the board knowing full well. It could be higher, it could be lower. And that is my presentation on that.
Excellent. And the motivation for the additional 2% for retirees in the, it was initiated because of the cost of living?
Yes.
Inflation?
Yes. So inflation, for example, Social Security had a large cola increase. This was a sort of a one-time approval, one time, and for retirees that retired July 1st of this past year.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea. I don't have any questions or concerns, Jim?
I think it's a no-brainer.
I think so too, Kevin. For our people on fixed income, I'm happy to support them, especially such a small cost of the town. So thank you. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve the additional 2% retiree cola for eligible retirees, excuse me, eligible retirees in fiscal year 2023, as approved by the Norfolk County Retirement System.
Second, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Excellent. And now to discuss on Select Board assignments.
I think the board can sort of handle the liaison assignments. However, Mr. Lehan did let me know that we are missing, I believe, the Police Department needs a liaison. So I would factor that into whatever your assignments are here.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Seeing as we're doing this for really two and a half months, why don't I just take the vacant spots as they are so listed, which is Historical Commission, Fire Station Building Committee, Recreation Commission Advisory Committee, and Council on Aging? They're listed as vacant. I assume that is the case.
We provide that information to show what the positions were previously. The sheet before is how they are assigned at the moment.
So I would agree with that. With the exception is I've really enjoyed, this has been my first time, because I've only been on advisory since C.C. left in July. So I've been learning a lot from being on the Advisory Committee as I'm relatively, I'm a newer Select Board member, learning my thing. And so I would keep advisory because I have found that to be really valuable for me professionally.
I mean, we don't have to mess this all up because it's only for two and a half months. So I'm willing to work on whatever you would like. I would like to. I did notice that the police was not listed, and I have always enjoyed working with the police. So I would like to work with the Police Department. Kevin, I don't know if it makes sense for me to work with King Philip, seeing as I'm doing the budget over there anyway, but it's your call. You're the relationship and I defer to you on that.
I mean, you're already there for the meetings, Jim. It just seems to make logical sense from my perspective.
Okay. I'm comfortable either way. You've been, you've been on our back. That's the good news. You've been at the meetings. That's rare. So I compliment you.
I will say this, though. You know, we actually knowledgeably removed the police and fire from the liaison ships on the advice of the previous town administrator, given the fact that they were operational departments as opposed to volunteer boards and committees. That doesn't mean that I feel that we should leave them off for good, but I just wanted to provide some insight as to why they're not on that list.
Okay. I mean, I would still like to, I mean, I will stay close to the police anyway because I just, you know, to me, schools, public safety, fire and police, critical to making this town what it is. And so either formally or informally, I will be there to assist them in whatever capacity they may need. So either way is fine by me, but I just think it's important for the board to stay close to those organizations.
May I just ask your opinion on that?
I think whether it's informal or formal, I think the board has had a relationship with all these departments already. So I don't, if that's what was previously decided, I see no issue with it. And of course, Mr. Lehan, as well as all the Select Board members, have a relationship with those departments. So I think that's fine with me.
Okay. So I would say that then for right now, we'll add police and fire because I think that, well, they obviously do have an important role in there. I'll take on advisory formally. We'll move, what I'm hearing, King Philip will move it down to, not down, but I'm just going to change.
Across, across works.
Across, thank you, I apologize for that.
Down was fine too.
Yes, but well, it's just down on my paper. That's why I was. Thank you, that sounds good. And does that feel good, Kevin? Jim?
It's fine. Yeah, because this is only for two and a half months. It's really to get through town meeting. So it's, it's fine.
Anita, in terms of the departments, I have a suggestion. Let's leave them as they are. Because the Fire Station Build Committee, from what I'm seeing, Jim would become that liaison as well, right?
Actually, I think, I would, no, I have not worked with them. And I think that until we reorganize, in my opinion, I would, whoever had that, I think you did, Kevin? Yeah, I would recommend that you keep that because you've built the relationships and I think it's important for you to keep that.
So I would keep the operational departments out of it for this one, then take a look at in.
How we want to do that in the two months when we are back. That sounds like a good plan to.
Well, I will connect with them anyway, but I'll do it informally.
Yes. Okay. So we have, did you catch up those changes? I have a scribbly mess here.
Police and Fire, King Philip is going to Jim.
And that's really it, I think, right?
Fire Station is going to go to Kevin, and I'm going to keep advisory.
Well, you're going to keep everything you have.
Everything I have, yes.
Yeah, so just keep it the way it is. And I'll just pick up informal relationship with police and fire and a formal relationship with KP.
Perfect.
That agreeable?
That's very agreeable.
Okay.
I was looking at the back.
I did too. Don't feel bad. There is no point fixing this all up at this point.
And so can we do a motion that sort of broadly captures what we just said, or do we have to indicate all those?
I would, it seems like King Philip is the only thing that's really transferring.
I will make a motion that King Philip relation, Board Liaison, go to Jim Lehan, and all of the other relationships remain as stated.
Second, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
All right. Number 12, discussing Select Board expansion to five members.
This has been an agenda item that the board has had on the agenda a couple of times. In the packet is an updated sort of, the memo is the same, but there's some updated information. Select Board Member Calcutta had asked for some budgetary information, so I did provide that updated information in the Excel sheet. Otherwise, I believe the board's intent was to discuss this issue further and to provide clarification and sort of understanding whether we're putting a warrant article on this upcoming warrant or if we're holding off. So I think.
All right. I'm going to lob it to you first, Kevin, because you're the one who started the conversation. Is that okay?
Of course. So when we raised this issue initially, it was in, the intent was to address a gap that we'd experienced two times in my short tenure here on the board. And, you know, as we went through some of the lineups of the data that was provided by Justin and the team, which is fantastic, by the way, thank you so much for inlaying the tax levy information as well. You can see that we're kind of in the minority as it pertains to boards that still maintain a three-member board versus a five-member board. Another thing I did was I informally threw a message up on social media asking for general feedback from the community about what they thought about the potential for making this kind of shift. And, you know, the feedback was mixed. I heard some people echo concerns of, you know, broadening the scope and if we'd be able to find people to even serve in these capacities. And then we heard some people that were in support. In fact, I had one person who suggested that we go for the Franklin model of a town council with a town manager, which, you know, baby steps. But overall, I think that what I would like to do now, from my perspective, is open it up to more feedback, more formal set of feedback from the community, perhaps by putting it as a discussion item on a few-year agenda and advertising to the community those who have strong feelings one way or another to come and share with us. And I think at that point, we'd be able to determine if this is something we want to move forward with for Spring Town Meeting on the warrant, or if this is something that doesn't make sense for us at this time. At least that's where I am from my perspective. I'm more than open to hearing the feelings of the rest of the board.
Thank you. Jim, do you have big feelings?
I do. This is an issue that's come up many times in the years. It seems like a regular event. Kevin has had the experience of having a member off the board two times in five years. I can share that. I've had the experience of two members off. But if you look historically, it's only happened four times in 40 years. So it is not a regular event. And if you look at those four events, two of them were members that resigned because they wanted to be candidates for vacancies on town administrators. So that's a very unique set of circumstances. The third resigned because of legal considerations. And the fourth resigned because of relocating. So four times, although Kevin has experienced it twice in five years, that is an anomaly. And so it's not a regular event. If you go to five members and you still lose someone, you're still running the risk of a two-to-two vote. So I don't know that that is a really good reason to do it. The logic of going to it, to me, is that if you feel the town needs broader representation. And I think at the size of this population, we do not at this point in time. The big concern I have between five-member boards and three-member boards is transparency. I've been involved in a number of boards that are more than five, five or more members. I have it on the King Philip School Committee. And you see this in Rentham all the time. What happens is you get people, two members can now get together and, let's just say, deliberate whatever issues they may feel are important, and then come to the meeting in a public forum with a preconceived or predetermined view of how they want to do that. We can't do that. You know, to me, the great advantage to a three-member board is the transparency. You and I can go have lunch, but we can't deliberate, or we're in violation of the open meeting laws. Whereas if we have a five-member board, we can do that. And you tend to get those pockets of influence that I have seen in other towns, including Rentham and including Dennis, where I have a home and watch the meetings as well. I just think that the transparency and the requirements of a three-member board, having all discussions in front of the TV, at the board level, where the public can see it, is a value to the town. If we grow to a point where broader representation is needed, then by all means, we should explore this. But I just think that the transparency component of that, having seen the other side of that, I see it now in KP, where groups get together and they lobby for various positions, and we get into the meetings and we get into these very awkward discussions. And it's happened in Rentham, it's happened in Dennis, it happens in a lot of the five-member boards. It cannot happen on a three-member board. And I think that's a value and I would not want to lose that value until such time as the population really kind of mandates the need to have broader representation. I would be supportive of Kevin's point in, in making it a sort of an open hearing kind of process if people want to give their input, but my personal feeling is I would like to keep it a three for that reason. I think transparency is important and I know you folks have said that many times. Kevin, I know that when you and I were on the board together, that was an important issue for both of us, is that you may not like what's said, but it will be said in front of everybody and in public and everyone will see it and there's no collusion or conversations taking place in the background. And a three-member board prevents that, it prevents it. And I think that's a value to the town. So personally, I, I would be against expanding it to five, but if that's what the town wants, that's what we do.
So I guess I went into this issue sort of without big feelings on either side and as I sort of in the privacy of my own head sort of thought about the pros and cons, I thought a lot about the, a lot of what you're talking about, Jim, the intimacy of this, of the three-person board and, and I've really enjoyed that, even though there's the, the pressure of that from the camera, like we really do have to have that. I have really enjoyed the intimacy of the three-person board. I've also firsthand experienced the sort of Kevin and I jokingly talking about, hopefully neither one of us got hit by a bus, because if either one of us was hit by a bus, the town of Norfolk couldn't do any business and it couldn't move forward because we were in that situation. So I can absolutely see Kevin's point too, we're opening it up. I guess in terms of, of next steps, because we're still at a conversation stage, I'm gonna kind of bounce back to you, Kevin. Do you think we should have, we could add on our agenda, a public hearing so the public could voice in? Or do you think it makes more sense to, to just let the public decide that? I guess I want, because you have some compelling, I have, I have definitely enjoyed, as a brand-new person, brand-new to this role, I have enjoyed the intimacy of the three-person board. I've been frustrated at times, about times I'd wanted to reach out to CC or to Kevin to ask questions, but we have used the town administrator in that capacity. So I'm, I, I, I don't think I land strongly on one side or the other, but I'm interested in, Kevin, what are you thinking? As a next step, you were saying having, adding a public hearing is what I'm understanding? You're muted.
You're muted, Kevin.
Can you do that? I am not muted.
We can hear you now.
We can hear you now.
Okay. One second?
No, you're good.
From the top.
Okay. Okay. I, I do think that listing this as a formal agenda item for an upcoming meeting, advertising to the community that we'll be talking about it and collecting feedback at that time would be pretty directional in terms of my feelings of if we should move forward or not. Are we gonna get swaths of people to come in and discuss their personal feelings about the board size? Probably not, but I would like to give the opportunity to the community to present that feedback and then kind of map out where we go from there.
I, I'm fine with that. Are you fine with that?
I'm all for community input, Kevin. I'm with you.
Awesome. So does that, go ahead?
That, that provides clarification direction for me. I just want to make sure what we do to promote that event aligns with what the board is thinking. So as the board is aware, we're working with Guildfoil Public Relations, maybe putting a, a, that, a press release statement, putting it on our website, on the news, putting it on social media. Is that suitable to promote this agenda item?
May I make a suggestion?
You may.
I'm not sure that I would make this a, what you call a public hearing, because there are some other considerations that go around that particular process, but just make it an open dialogue conversation where we have, one, a little bit more control and not quite the same structure that a public hearing brings to the table. We don't need to do this as a public hearing, we can just do this as an open dialogue.
Right.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, that's the direction I thought I was.
That sounds really great, almost like a public comment section, where we entertain three minutes of public comment, but it's not a back and forth, it's more of an opportunity for us to listen to our community. I think that sounds brilliant.
Okay, I, I have the direction.
Public hearing gets us into a whole different type of dialogue and, and we don't need to do that to get what we're looking for.
That sounds good. Thank you for that suggestion, Kevin, great suggestion. Thank you for making that happen.
Oh, I think it's a great idea. It, it's a worthy conversation and there are sound arguments on both sides. And I'm glad neither of you got hit by a bus.
Yes, me too, actually.
We don't have a bus in Norfolk. Gatrick could, doesn't go that fast, so you wouldn't be injured, you'd be fine.
But it is something, like, there are buses in the world.
There are.
It is something to consider. We do live, die every day. All right, so that's discussion item number 12, and then there's general updates.
I just have two quick updates. I do want to update the select board and the public about the library reopening process. Our last select board meeting outlined what we were doing for the senior center. We've actually heard very good feedback about services being provided here in Town Hall as well as the Grange. I do want to commend our COA director and her team for the work that they've done, as well as our facilities team, to sort of handle this issue and, and relocate them to Town Hall, to make sure we're providing the services that our seniors deserve and require. In terms of the library, the library is, our facilities team has been working really hard to try to make sure that the library is open as soon as possible. Really, the last step is to get the carpet down. There are some ledges that need to be smoothed, ADA requirements, so we're, we're working with our facilities director and our library director to get that process done. Hopefully, the carpet is going to be shipped this week, Thursday, and then we will try to get the library open as soon as possible from then. So that's an update regarding the library. I do want to let the board know, I'm sure they're aware, the board previously authorized the town administrator to sign on for opioid abatements. So initially, there was an earlier abatement, now there are additional companies that have come to settle. They include Walmart, Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, J&amp;J. So myself and the finance director have signed on for those next settlements. Those settlement amounts, these are estimates, but they're approximately $116,000, about $117,000 that Norfolk is expected to get over the forthcoming years. To date, we have received about $40,000 in opioid settlements. As the board is aware, these funds were sort of, the mechanism to receive that fund, it went into the general fund, but direction from the board, sort of an advice, is that we create a stabilization fund. I intend to put a warrant article together to create a stabilization fund to allow those funds for opioid funds to be put in that stabilization fund and then that allows the board and town meeting to decide how to allocate those funds. The guidance is to go towards, you know, mental health, opioid remediation, so forth.
I mean, a stabilization fund has to have a designation, so what would that, is it for the mental health issues? Is that what it would be designated for?
That was what the direction of the board has been.
Wonderful idea.
Crap, work on the warrant article.
Wonderful idea.
But I did want to let the board know, because that is a sizable amount. There are, there potentially are distributor funds and distributor funds are $96,000, so technically the town would be looking at about $252,000, estimating amount of funds for opioids.
Another question? You might just check with town council when you put together the warrant to designate what the purpose of the stabilization fund is, because I, I would want, personally, I, I think, and I know you would agree, it should include schools, you know, and the students in our schools. The data that I have seen, and I'm sure you have too, the mental health issues in schools today are alarming, just scary. And anything we can do that provides support, and money is a factor, it's the reality of life, that the need there is enormous. It's just, the numbers scare me when I see them now.
They are scary.
Yes, and it's just, we have to do something to help this and, so be sure it includes schools, please, my, my opinion, if that's agreeable with everybody.
Thank you, I will do that.
Yeah, the data is tragic.
And ultimately, town meeting would, if it's a stabilization fund, as the board is aware, would allocate those funds, so I'll make sure incorporate school as well in there. Those are my updates.
Excellent. Do you have any updates?
No, just a comment, next meeting, March 7th. I have a conflict that I've had on the books for some time. I have to go to a board meeting, I still do some consulting for some large pensions, and I have a two-day board meeting that I have to go to that has been on the book for six months. So if the agenda can be kept light, I would be grateful. I, I would not expect you to move the date, that's not fair, but I would appreciate it if the agenda could be kept light. And again, I apologize, in my 15 years on the board, I missed one meeting because my plane was grounded in DC and so I, I do not like missing meetings, but this I cannot avoid.
Absolutely.
I cannot reschedule it.
All right, thank you. Kevin, any updates?
Just a quick notice, I'd like to promote the fact that the town clerk is currently accepting nomination forms for the annual town election, so anybody out there who feels strongly about contributing to the betterment of the community, please see the town clerk, pull out your forms and come get involved.
Thank you, I saw her today.
Oh, I do have another data, if I may, apologize.
Go ahead.
Did you have one?
No, go right ahead and then I'll finish up.
We are doing the finalist interviews for the new superintendent at King Philip, which will be on the, well, the actual interviews will be on the first and the second of March, which is next week, Wednesday and Thursday, I believe, if my dates are right. Those are public meetings and they will be televised. There are four finalists and I hope people will watch.
Thank you very much. And I don't have any official updates, I had to ask Blair to join us because there's been a lot in the news about the water quality and it's nice to, there's so much bad news